You'd stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 7th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And Robert in the front row has listening devices if you need them.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 30th, 2014.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve their minutes. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,347,348.
Pay the bills.
Second the bills.
Motion and a second.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
The bills are a little high this month, but they include $770,000 for one paving project and $173,000 for a bridge project.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second on routine actions. Any questions for Kerry? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for October 2014.
I have five anniversaries for you today. Good morning. We have Danny Thorson, who's a corporal at the jail, celebrating five years of service. Krista Mirsma at JDC, celebrating 10. Rebecca Carpenter, legal office assistant with the state's attorney, celebrating 10. And then we have two more 30-year anniversaries. Don Hanson, who's a senior trial attorney for us at the state's attorney's office, and your director, Bill Hoskins, at the museum, celebrating 30 as well. So our congratulations go out to them.
And I don't think anyone is here.
I don't think we do. No?
Okay. Well, thank you to our dedicated employees who are not here. They're working hard. Okay.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for September 2014.
This month, we have 222 volunteers throughout county, so our thanks go out to them.
And thank you again to volunteers. All right.
Item D is consider a motion for a special personnel action to approve the rate of pay increase for genetics, human resource generalists from '16-7 to '16-8.
This, you might recall, is actually a two-pronged action. Jen has been receiving temporary additional duty pay since the spring as she took over some temporary responsibilities and lives in permanent. Now that those temporary responsibilities have ended, we want to pull back her salary, but I'm asking approval to keep half of it in place and recognition of those permanent duties. That predominantly involves coordinating our new drug and alcohol random testing program and additional pre-employment. She's responsible for everything, for making sure that we're following the policy procedures, the legalities, as well as the billing.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Kerry? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And item E is consider a request from juvenile detention center to authorize the early hire of a community supervision monitor position reclassified, authorized for FY 2015.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitz attached a briefing memo for you, but just as a quick summary, this is request to hire a position that was reclassified from an admin secretary to a community supervision monitor. He's simply asking to hire a few months early with some salary savings, and he's here. If you have additional questions.
Any questions for Jamie on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie, for coming.
Good presentation, Jamie.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is a notice and request. Notice from the South Dakota State Historical Society of nomination to place concrete interstate tipus located at or near Valley Springs on the National Register of Historic Places.
Okay.
There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity where anybody who is not on the agenda and would like to speak about something at this time can come forward and identify themselves. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is to issue a proclamation recognizing October 6th through the 10th, 2014, as National 4-H Week in Minnehaha County. Charles Martinell.
Good morning, commissioners. This week is National 4-H Week. It's the week that we kick off our new 4-H year. Last, we just got done celebrating the end of last year with my fund reports, and we found out the last year, the 4-H program served 7,700 kids in Minnehaha County. So it's a great number for the county and for the staff we have on hand. We are requesting here is a proclamation for the 4-H Week, and I'll read it out loud. Whereas 4-H is an educational program where members focus on learning by doing with their hands, hearts, heads, heart, hands, and health, and whereas the 4-H program develops critical thinking and problem-solving skills that are sought by the business world and the public service, and whereas 4-H develops lifelong skills, leadership, and citizenship of urban and rural youth, all of which will benefit their families, careers, communities on local, state, national, international level, and whereas 4-H youth are three and a half more times likely than youth in other programs to be actively involved in community service, and whereas Minnehaha County Commission, the local partner, along with the South Dakota State University, the state partner, and the United States Department of Agriculture, the national partner, encourage the people in Minnehaha County to become involved with the 4-H program, a program that was established by the United States Congress in 1914. So we would like to request that this week be recognized and that tomorrow, October 8th, be recognized as Minnehaha County 4-H Day.
Are there any questions for Charles? 4-H has been a part of Minnehaha County for many years, and it has changed in the last few years, but continues to go strong and grow in membership. So we thank you for your work in 4-H. Is there a motion to approve?
There is a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Charles.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just comment that apparently it's 100 years since this was established, 1914, 2014.
Hundred-year anniversary.
Hello. David Heinold, Planning Department. A proclamation to recognize National Community Planning Month, the American Planning Association, which is kind of the guiding principle in terms of planners across the country. And it's just to recognize the involvement of all citizen leaders and people that volunteer as well to their commitment to the county or the community or the special place, the region that they identify with. So I'll read the proclamation as it stands. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live and work. Whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. Whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorsed National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and our environment. Whereas, the celebration of Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissioners and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the county of Minnehaha. Whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the county of Minnehaha and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2014 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the county of Minnehaha in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And also with this, I have another announcement to make. This is in conjunction with the public workshop. This Community Planning Month proclamation is in conjunction to an announcement of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting. For those who may not be aware, the Invision 2035 process began 2011, which at this point, we're still continuing the ongoing process of collecting citizen input. And the next meeting of that would be on Thursday, October 16th, 6:30 to 7:30 at the Humboldt Community Center, 201 South Main Street. Members of the public are encouraged to attend and bring your ideas so that we can capture the vision for the future of Minnehaha County. There's also another thing that I'd like to announce with this as well. This goes along with the public workshop is an activity to help generate people's ideas and concerns for the future. It's to capture the character of the community or special place that you identify most. So think about something that you'd like to protect, and then identify how you'd want to show this, whether that be through photographs, art, drawings, video, or any other media. Those material can be submitted to the planning department, and at the end, the goal of this activity is just, as I mentioned, is to generate people's ideas and concerns for the future of Minnehaha County. So the duration of this activity would approximately take about two months with the public meeting at the end to discuss the results of this and just to help develop that vision statement for the comprehensive plan. And as well, and that's all I have for just the announcement of this, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of just collecting, just having that ongoing process for collecting citizen input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for David?
Move to approve the resolution.
I need a motion that would approve the proclamation and authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public open house Thursday, October 16th, at the Humboldt Community Center in Humboldt, South Dakota.
It can all be there.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Say it.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, David.
Item number 12 is consider an amendment to the promissory note between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Empire Fair Association for ICE debt service agreement. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, commissioners. Minnehaha County currently has two agreements with the Sioux Empire Fair Association that lay out the obligations for the association to repay the county for the debt service that was related to the ICE and the hockey improvements that were done in the expo building back in 1995, 1996. And that there was an original promissory note dated January 1996 that was later amended through, an amended agreement in November of 2006 that laid out the obligation and the timeframe for the association to make those debt service payments. The last payment that is due on that amended promissory note is actually scheduled for November of this year in the amount of $45,000. As you know, and you have in your packets, a request from the Sioux Empire Fair Association to relieve them of that obligation to make that final ICE service payment and to have the county assume that responsibility. There are representatives here from the association to answer any questions you may have regarding that request, but consistent with that request, I've prepared an addendum that would relieve them of that final obligation and that would fully satisfy both the original promissory note and the amended promissory note as being satisfied in full. I can tell you that the county does have the capacity within the building fund in order to make that payment without an expectation of reimbursement from the fair association. As you know, I mean, those are all built into our debt service calculations and levies, you know, as we move forward, and so this is a reimbursement of that obligation. So we do have the capacity to absorb it without an expectation of reimbursement. But they are here, and that if you have questions, and they may in fact want to say a couple words, so.
I have a question for Ken.
Yeah, I have a question for Ken, too.
So Ken, were we anticipating this? Was this in our budget as we looked at?
Again, this is a reimbursement primarily on the debt service because these are all incorporated as part of our levy requirements when we have debt service, but this was an arrangement that was made several years ago because the county went into this with the idea that the fair association would pay that back and beef up those obligations. So the balance of the building fund, again, is such, and we went through that during the budget hearings this year to show you what the balance was, you know, the cash balance. So we do have the capacity.
Our budget hearings this year, though, for FY 15.
Correct. And that, I'm just telling you, we have the cash capacity in the building fund to absorb this and make the payment without the expectation of reimbursement.
Ken, in the past, the money to pay that debt reimbursement came directly from the rent that was paid by the ICE association.
That's where they got the money.
Since they have moved out of our building, that left the last payment.
And that is the basis of their request, if you take a look at their letter, is that they no longer have the opportunity with the new ICE facility that was built. They didn't have the capacity this year in order to generate that revenue that they would normally use to make this kind of a payment.
Scott, you want to come up and, if you have any additional comments or if there's questions from the board?
Scott, we see you at the Sioux Empire Fair Association. We just, with the absence of hockey and the timeframe of the cement was going in, we had several inquiries about using that center room, but without, when we went through the bid process and with the timing of the cement, we didn't get anything booked in there this year until next year, where we have several inquiries as well. Lot of opportunity to fill that room. I'm very confident that the four months hockey was in there, within a couple of years, will be used on a regular basis. There's a tremendous amount of interest, but right now, we have not had an opportunity to take advantage of that room being available.
Any questions for Scott? Any comments? Commissioner Benega?
Scott, most of this were around 20 years ago. Was this conversation about making the enhancements to the facility, was that a county commission decision, or was that at the request of the fair board to increase the potential of rentals?
As far as that...
Well, you may have to answer it, then.
I would have that question answered by Ken, yeah, because I was, I mean, it was there when I got there, and it's been there 20 years.
This was a project that was specifically brought to the commission for action from the fair association at that time, and that they saw an opportunity to make some improvements out there with hockey and thought it would be a money-making venture for the association. So they did come to us in order to float the bonds necessary to make those improvements. So that was specifically their reason.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to hit Ken again here, too. Ken, isn't it true, though, that at that time, when we signed the original agreement, the city was our partner on this?
The city was not a signator to the agreement. However, they were in fact a funding partner for a couple of years as it related to open skate, and that that was their big interest in having the facility there to support open skate. But that support did not, certainly did not continue through the life of this debt service and through the life of those improvements. Didn't really last real long.
Commissioner Pecas.
Not to open up this horrible wound, but since you brought it up, what's interesting, though, is that there was a handshake with the current mayor indicating that the city wouldn't get into the ICE business, wasn't there?
The current mayor?
No, 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 no. The current mayor 20 years ago.
Oh, and that, you know, I, my memory is pretty good, but I don't know if it goes to that kind of a detail. But there was, I will say that, yes, there was that expectation of some continued support by the city on the operations of that, and that did not continue on as expected.
But to be fair, back then, we actually did work on some partnerships without after reducing everything to a written agreement, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's a different world we live in.
The city used to fund the operation for about $25,000 a year.
Right. That was back when we still did stuff on handshakes.
Are there any other questions for Scott? Look for a motion on this.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pecas.
You know, Jeff brought up a great comment, you know, was this envisioned during the budget process? And when we were setting the amount of money that was going to be going to the fair, in the back of my mind, if it wasn't overtly expressed by me, it certainly was implied that the cost of the ICE has always been something that, within the last, I would say, seven years, has been assumed by the county as part of their ongoing operations to try to support the fair. And they've been challenged, we've been challenged, but ultimately, this is one of the operating steps that we've taken to try to help them make their payments. And we can either deal with it here or deal with it next year when we're going to be expecting that payment, because I don't believe it's going to be rolling in.
I want to stress that this year is the last payment.
I'm saying in history past, we've had to deal with this on an ongoing basis. And I think, you know, you've been here a long time, too, Jeff. This has been something we've been dealing with, so. It was on my mind when we were talking about that allocation, so if it wasn't expressed, it was certainly on my mind.
Commissioner Barth.
I plan to support the motion. It has been bleeding us at the fair for these many years, and certainly, we probably could have given each of the kids involved $1,000 and gotten off for less, but it's what it is, and we'll be done with it.
Scott, is the cement in now?
No, they're starting on that next week. The cement will be finished by Thanksgiving.
Okay. And then we'll put new events in there.
You know, one of our challenges the last couple of years was actually revamping and making sure the compressors were working correctly, and, you know, there's actually an aftermarket for that. Obviously, the compressors are somewhat old. Have you guys looked into repurposing those or putting those up for auction or anything like that?
All of the equipment was given away by the previous CEO to the hockey association.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? I have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Benega?
I just have a comment, and I wasn't here, but frankly, when another entity usually makes a decision about the process, I always think that they have the responsibility because they're also receiving the income. In this particular case, we do own the building. I'm not excited about doing this, but because frankly, I think that's part of the equation. We didn't make the decision not to have the hockey. The community kind of made that decision for us, if you will, by doing a new facility. So it's all coming out of taxpayers' pockets, unfortunately. So I think we need to complete this and move on.
Commissioner Pecas.
You know, we've seen, I hope that the commissioner remembers, we've seen the spreadsheets. We've never made money with hockey. We've always lost money. So let's get rid of the albatross and move forward.
I have a motion and a second to amend the promissory note between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Empire Fair Association for the ICE debt service agreement. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 13, consider an amendment to the agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for election services. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Today, I have a proposal. City of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County currently work under a contract for election services. The auditor's office believes this arrangement benefits the citizenry as a whole and wishes to continue doing so. To that end, the city of Sioux Falls has offered to provide up to $110,000 towards the purchase of one of the new 850 ballot tabulation machines. This amendment to the original contract lays out the terms that they desire for the appropriation. Questions?
Any questions for Bob? Commissioner Barth.
Auditor, you demonstrated those machines the other day, right? The new 850s?
Well, we tested. We had all of our staff in, somebody from the city, somebody from the school.
How did they look to you?
They looked great. Now, we did have an issue running our test ballots through, and we had a gentleman come up here yesterday, and he did some adjustments to the reading scan part of that, and seems to work fine now.
Bob, there won't be any additional machines purchased. This is to help with the purchase of the machines we already have.
We kind of looked at the numbers, and I think we've even got growth for 30,000 people over the next 10 years. These machines will handle them quite fine.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Auditor Bob? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider a motion to approve a resolution giving preliminary approval to a project with Augustana College Association and the issuance of economic development revenue bonds to finance such project and permitting reimbursement of certain project costs from bond proceeds, and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing on the proposed project and issuance of bonds under chapter 9-54. Hearing at 9:00 a.m., Wednesday, November 12th, 2014, at a special commission meeting. Sherry Roder will be here presenting.
Good morning. Last week, I was here with Tom Meyer, and we presented the proposed issuance of conduit pass-through tax-exempt bonds for the benefit of Augustana College and the Science Center. We're here this week to ask for formal approval for the county to act as the issuer of these pass-through bonds. As we discussed last week, these remain solely the obligation of Augustana College, and the county is in effect lending its governmental entity status to allow Augustana to borrow on a tax-exempt basis. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I think we thoroughly discussed this last week. Is there a motion?
So move.
Say it.
I have a motion and a second to give authorization for the resolution to give preliminary approval to the project for Augustana College. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Happy building.
Can we also get a motion to authorize the auditor to publish the notice?
And I need a motion.
That's my motion. Say it.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is consider a motion to supplement from the building fund to the building funded budget, ASN 19625, fairgrounds in the amount of $91,557.64, representing insurance reimbursement from Midwest Family Mutual Insurance Company. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson, county auditor's office. We received a check from the insurance company for damages incurred at the fairgrounds for a number of different buildings. The amount was $91,557.64. So we're requesting that you approve a supplement to the budget.
So move.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any questions for Darlene? All those in favor say...
Madam Chair.
Commissioner. Oh, Ken, did you have a comment?
Commissioner Ken's coming up.
I was going to say Commissioner Barth. Ken.
I wish you would quit doing this. No, I just wanted to let the commission know, we've been in contact with Scott, you know, to go over those improvements. You know, what we're trying to do right now is to determine what work needs to be done on the type of work because, you know, to see whether or not we do have to go out for bids or not. I mean, there may be a category of roofers that would do just the shingles that might fall underneath the $50,000. Another contractor for roofing that will be, you know, for metal roof, which is a different kind of animal and siding that may be as well. So we're looking at those issues to make a determination whether we do or do not have to go out for bids in order to make these improvements. So we'll keep you posted on that if we need to do anything.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16, consider a motion to release approach permit penalties related to construction on South Dakota Highway 19 by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners. D.J. Boothby, highway superintendent. I'll give you a little bit of background on this, and then I'll introduce Travis Dressen, the South Dakota DOT area engineer. We have a resolution establishing fees for highway access permits in the county, and the way that it works, basically, a resident fills out one of the applications, attaches a fee that we established with the resolution, and submits that to the highway department. And the highway department investigates the request and either grants or denies the request for new access. The DOT has a Highway 19 reconstruction project this year over there on Highway 19. And as part of that, they relocated, they have relocated two driveways from State Highway 19 around the corner to county highways. We didn't have a permit request or anything like that. And so when our technician found out about the new driveway accesses, we basically sent a letter that's in your packet and fined them $500 according to the resolution. And now we sit with, the DOT has a letter that they're requesting the fees to be released. It was never our intent to either charge fees to the DOT or penalize another state agency. So we have the request for the commission to consider. If Travis wants to say anything, you guys are welcome to ask him any questions. Or me, any questions? We support releasing the penalties. The highway department does.
Questions for D.J.? Commissioner Barth.
Does the state then forgive our penalties on these?
We haven't received any penalties.
Travis Dressen, South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Good morning. I didn't quite hear your question.
I was wondering, when the shoe is on the other foot, do you guys release the county from liability on these issues?
As far as I know, the DOT has no fines or penalties associated with these types of access permits. I don't know of a similar situation that might occur. Okay.
Questions? Commissioner Pecus.
Well, we're partners with the state of South Dakota, and I absolutely have no problem working with our partner, hand in glove. I hope other local governmental entities take note of this, and we'll also work with Minnehaha County in lieu of transferring titles and passing land back and forth for zoning and planning purposes. So with that being said, I'm going to support it.
I'm wondering about the temporary, or the access fees. There was access fees for moving those, too. I mean, are we just rescinding the penalty and those access fees are still, permitting fees are still in place, or how are you handling that part of it?
We won't charge a permit fee for the state agency. And so the $500 penalties will be waived, and there will be no charge for the application.
Okay. Commissioner Barth.
I just want to comment that I was at a DOT meeting where advocates from the City of Madison were excited to have Highway 34 made into a four-lane highway all the way to Highway 29. And it seems to me that Highway 19 should be four lanes all the way from Madison to 90.
Any other questions or comments? I'd look for a motion to consider a release of the approach permits and penalties.
That's my motion. Say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for a decrease of $8,522 to the contract between Minnehaha County and Monarch Oil for Project MC 121-138 MS-14, micro-surfacing of Highway 121. Jason Reeves.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Reeves, Senior Project Engineer at the Highway Department. Just finalizing some more paperwork on a project from this summer. This would be our micro-surfacing project we did on Highway 121, also known as Eros Road, from Yogi Bear up to Highway 122, and then from the Brandon city limits to the state line on Highway 138. After all of our final quantities were verified with the contractor, we came up with a net decrease on the project of $8,552. And this is just a change order to finalize that, to process their final pay application and be done with their paperwork for the project.
Any questions for Jason on this? It's kind of nice to have some money come back for a change.
Overapproval on this.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Jason, if you could wait a second, I have a question on the next item.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Liaison reports. I just have a question for Jason. I actually asked D.J. to stay, but I think he left. And that was about the mowing in the county. I'm just continuing to get comments on that. I got a letter this last week concerning about the mowing. I'm wondering what the time schedule was to complete. Is D.J. still here? Good. We talked about it on the phone earlier this week, about the mowing. If you were going to make a comment, maybe get it out to our rural residents who are concerned about the length of the grass, and we had some mowers down.
Sure. The county highway department owns two ditch mowers that we operate. We mow two to three times per year, depending on the rate of the growth of the grass. And this summer has been abnormally difficult for our mowing. Our mowers have broken down several times. They were broke down for multiple weeks at a time. Both mowers have been in pretty rough shape. Again, I learned this morning, one of our mowers broke down. And so I apologize for any of the complaints that we've been getting. I apologize to the residents for the long grass out there. We're doing the best that we can. And we have identified mowing as something that we're going to look at, especially this winter, as far as is there anything that we can do better or different, possibly contracting out part of the mowing or working with residents if they want to pave the grass in the ditch to get a program going where they can more proactively mow. So mowing has been pretty tough this summer, and we hope we can do it better next year.
Do we have an idea of what the timeframe is now to try to finish up mowing? I mean, is the grass, I mean, it is tall, we know that. But I'm concerned about deer sleeping out of the ditch as we start to harvest in the country and mark our accidents. So obviously, it is a concern for people. Do we have a timeframe, or?
We just recently completed the, I believe, the east half of the county, so the east half should be relatively good. And we're working on the west half with both mowers. If both mowers remain up and going, I think that in the next two or three weeks, we should be able to get that west half completed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions for D.J.? This is the commission liaison reports. Are there any other liaison reports? Okay. The next item is new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, I think we can adjourn into executive session for a brief personnel comment.
Okay, I'll make that motion to adjourn into exec for personnel.
Second.
A motion and a second.